I'd like to call the meeting into order. If you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. Welcome everyone who is watching from home. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Present.
Trustee Gatt.
Present.
Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Reichert.
Present.
Trustee Wigginton.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
Okay, everyone's present. Next is the approval of the Board of Trustees' minutes from August 20th, 2024, and August 27th, 2024. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Are there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yeah, ayes have it. We have had comments from the audience. If anyone here tonight would like to address the board, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try to keep your marks at five minutes. Welcome Chief Walters.
Good evening. My name is Greg Walters, 800 East Toledo Avenue. I have two parts here. The first part is, I have a comments from your Fire Chief Dan Decker. I've been in communication with him a lot lately. And he asked me if I could read some comments to you that he has. And then I have follow-up comments as well. So if you'll just bear with me.
Chief, I don't mean to interrupt, but Chief Decker is on an honor flight today.
Oh, it's listed right here.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Okay, Mayor and Village Trustees, I apologize for not being able to attend in person this evening, and I appreciate you excusing me so I could assist with the Central Illinois Honor Flight today, which will be back at General Wayne A. Downing Airport at approximately 9:30 PM. I have spent many hours since November of last year planning a response model that increases safety for the residents, visitors, and business owners in Peoria Heights. One of the initial concerns brought to my attention was the unusually large number of incidents where no member of the Fire Department responded. I was informed there had been over 140 calls from January 1 until November 1, 2023, that had no response from our members. This is unacceptable and has been my most important focus since accepting this position. The members of the Peoria Heights Fire Department are dedicated men and women who give their time to protect the residents and visitors of Peoria Heights. But a large increase in call numbers and state mandated training has made it difficult to retain and attract more members to be volunteer firefighters. Due to the difficulty assuring trained personnel will always be available, I suggested we hire personnel who will work 24 hours each day, then offer a second position filled by our members, who will be paid a stipend for their time. This structure provides a minimum response that would work as a daily duty crew and allow our volunteer members to focus on responding only on larger but less frequent incidents. The Village Board agreed, and we began the process for hiring full-time firefighters. We recognized the process would take four to six months, so the decision was made to fill duty crews with two stipend or volunteer members until the full-time personnel are hired. The program has been successful, but we still have seen times when no one was able or willing to accept the positions thereby leaving the station unmanned. The proposed structure that has been previously approved is the only one that guarantees 24-hour-a-day coverage. Our dedicated volunteers are a huge asset to the village, but their limited number and availability makes it impossible for them to meet the increased needs of the Fire Department. Choosing not to hire full-time personnel will increase the demand for our members and result in times when we struggle to fill the stipend shifts. When shifts go unfilled, residents will experience delays of up to 10 minutes before mutual aid companies will be dispatched. Regardless of the outcome of tonight's vote, our commitment remains the same. The members of the Peoria Heights Fire Department will continue to provide the best service to the community with the funds made available. We will do everything we can to mitigate every incident and will serve the residents of Peoria Heights to the best of our ability. Thank you, Daniel S. Decker, Peoria Heights Fire Chief. Now for my comments. I'm not as nice as Chief Decker. First thing, I am angered that we are revisiting this again. You made your decision months ago. Stick to it. This whole affair makes you all look weak and indecisive. It's not a good look. Now, regarding the so-called precarious budget position that the Heights may be facing, which has led us to where we are today, we all know that our economy is very fluid. It ebbs and it flows. It is my understanding that we have lost some tax revenue due to varying reasons in the past few months that may or may not have been predicted or forecast, which may impact the village budget in the out years. That is unfortunate, to say the least. However, history has proven time and time again that Peoria Heights bounces back from economic shortfalls in short order. I believe wholeheartedly that we will have the revenue available when it is needed to support this, and this economic scare will fade away, just like before. That being said, ladies and gentlemen, you made a commitment, a commitment to your residents, your business community, your Fire Chief, and to your Fire Department to move forward and establish a Fire Department model with full-time personnel augmented by volunteers and stipend positions, which would provide 24-hour-per-day coverage. You need to honor that commitment, because we have. Your Fire Chief, your Village Attorney, your Police and Fire Commissioner, members who are, I have one back there, Jeff. There are two of us here, Fire Commissioners, okay, who have worked tirelessly over these past months to bring this commitment to fruition. To halt this progress at the 11th hour is unconscionable. All the time and money spent so far on this will be lost for nothing. Frankly, it's embarrassing. You have a big decision before you, whether you hang your hat on a prediction, a projection, an informed guess, and vote to rescind the hiring of full-time firefighters, which in turn will remove the assurance of full-time 24-hour Fire Department response that your constituents are entitled to. Or defeat this proposed motion and move forward as planned. According to local media sources, there have been a few alternative plans mentioned by various Board members over the course of the past week that, even though appreciated, upon review, will still fall way short of the desired goal of providing 24-hour Fire Department response in Peoria Heights, which is what your citizens want now, not later. Another Board Member was quoted as saying that we needed to take baby steps. Well, the plan presented to you by Chief Decker, to which you voted in favor of, are those baby steps? Anything less would be status quo or worse. As you well know, this plan is nowhere near the best response option, but is definitely a move in the right direction, and that's what needs to happen. Chief Decker has outlined what will work and what won't. Respect his ideas, suggestions, and direction. Let your Fire Chief do his job. Rely on his many years of experience in public service on both sides of the table. And rely on his expertise in his field. He's not new to this. I am certain that he would be the first to pull the plug on this if he did not feel it was viable or sustainable. There's a certain amount of risk associated with this decision. I get it. But the greater risk would be not providing for the safety of your citizens around the clock. That falls directly in your lap. Therefore, I respectfully ask that the trustees who are currently leaning in favor of rescinding the decision to hire three full-time firefighters, please reconsider your position on this and reject this proposal, as it will cause more harm than good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Yes, go ahead, Ray.
All right. First of all, this is not directed at any one person, whether the board as a whole. In my honest opinion, what we have going on here is a knee-jerk reaction. Nobody could foresee the businesses closing. They close, it's going to cut down on the revenue, obviously, but are we saying we're never going to get the businesses replaced? Are we resigning ourselves to that back? I would certainly opt out. And if you vote for this rescinding, to me, it's the biggest mistake the board could ever make. And he summed it up perfectly, so I'll cut it. I'll stop my amplification now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Who's next? Chief Reichert?
Good evening. Norm Reichert, 5016 Glen Elm Drive. First of all, I'm not here to offend anybody or their opinion, so that's not my goal here. I'm not here to advocate anybody losing their jobs or anything like that, so don't take it that way. And anybody that knows me on this board knows my love of the Police Department, and that'll never change. I don't understand how we can have a fully-staffed Police Department and we can't hire two firemen. I don't understand that. You guys have known for a year now that we were headed toward this, yet you've replaced four officers in 2023 to 24, 2023 to 2024. Four officers have been replaced. Whether you want to call it lateral transfers, somebody retired, whatever, you've taken four people on it and you've assumed the pension liability. That's what I understand some of the Board members, just from reading on Facebook, they're concerned about pension liabilities. So why did we do that? Why didn't we say, well, we're going to hire a couple more people, maybe we shouldn't bring on a couple new police officers, and shift some of that weight over to the Fire Department? I don't understand that, and I think that's the whole board. You guys are all guilty of that, for doing that, not looking ahead. The fact of it is, it's cheaper to work overtime than it is to hire people. I've been in manufacturing for 42 and a half years, and that's all that was fed to me the whole time. It's cheaper to work overtime than it is to hire somebody. That's because of all the liability, pension, workers' comp, everything. And why? How come you guys didn't say that? How can none of the Board people, when they were going to hire another police officer, how come none of the Board members said, "I'm a little worried about the pension. I'm a little worried about the pension liability"? Nobody said anything. Is there a governing body that says how many police officers you have to have for a village of 5,000 people? I don't think so. Is there a governing body that says how many Fire Department people you're supposed to have? At the very least, I think this Board should reimburse the applicants their $163 out of their pocket that they had to pay to take that test. I think you guys should reimburse them, 20 applicants, that money. That would be the only fair thing if you're not going to do it. And then maybe you guys would think the next time before you go off and do something like this. Brandon, you like to do those volunteer cleanup days. That's a good thing. But what if I told you before you did that, that each person that was going to volunteer had to go to school for 26 weeks and learn how to pick up trash? How many volunteers you think you'd get? You wouldn't get very many. You'd probably not get any of them. And that's what we're facing with the volunteer Fire Department. It's not the guys. It's not Peoria Heights. It's all over the country. There are so many training things that we have to go through, and so much money that they have to take out of their pocket. They lose things. And that's why the volunteerism's fallen off, and they got to work two and three jobs to make ends meet because of the economy. I mean, let's face it, it's that way everywhere. So I just wish, I hope you guys, the next time something like this happens, I hope you guys think a little bit ahead. And I don't know what the answer is. There's no answer. I think you guys got yourselves in such a hole that you're not going to be able to pull yourselves out. That's what I believe. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. All right, next, Kathy.
Kathy Stevenson, resident of 1505 East Glen Avenue. And we come to a lot of meetings, but we were at the meeting last week, and I guess I have a different perspective. I'm not a firefighter, I'm not a police person, but have been a resident of Peoria Heights most of my life. And I felt like the meeting last week was a really refreshing debate between the Board. I felt like you were trying to get at, trying to make the best decision for the village, and yes, it was causing you to backtrack a little bit and try to rethink things, but I think the point was, and I certainly understand the comments that have been made, but I think the point that came across to me was, you did not want to go down this path if you didn't have a sustainable way to pay for things. So certainly appreciated that healthy debate that was very respectful, regardless of difference in of opinions. I think Clerk Turner's analysis, her command of the financials, the detail of her analysis was nothing short of impressive, and her ability to relay all those intricate items to everyone. However, as was said, that analysis that took place should have taken place last December. I think had that analysis been presented last December, I'm not sure we'd be where we are today. And I think that helps with the backtracking, and I understand the comments in terms of credibility and whatnot, but I also understand you guys were given the information that you had from an audience perspective, having been at that December meeting. It didn't appear that there was enough detail, there wasn't a detailed proposal that was presented, at least that the audience was shared with, that seemed like the questioning amongst the trustees, that there was missing information, and it seemed like a lot of it was based on, I think, a conversation that Administrator Sutton, I was going to call you trustee, and Chief Decker had had prior to that, but the trustees didn't see it. So it seemed like from an audience perspective, perhaps there should have been a deferral. There wasn't, so we are where we are. And I think public sentiment was so high that that maybe pressured some people. So the other thing we were surprised to learn last Tuesday was that to rescind a decision, there's a time sensitive nature. There's also a 75% majority of the vote, is what the mayor had relayed, versus a simple majority. We don't recall those details being shared at the December meeting. They weren't in the minutes. And that being said, if, former Chief Reichert, I think, or Chief Reichert? Anyways, to his comment, if that information had been shared, maybe people understood the full ramifications of the decision. They may have decided to defer it. And then in terms of the analysis, again, Stephanie had said, Clerk Turner had said that it's all based on assumptions. Everything's based on assumptions. Assumption changes, the numbers could change. We're very dependent on sales, tax, revenue. I think what was the meeting last week was really to take a look at the collective decisions that have been made, that have been voted upon, and kind of take those out, I think, three years to determine where we're going to be. And when I look at the Heights, when I look at even around Peoria and the number of businesses that are closing, and you're not seeing people, people don't have people to staff them, we have an aging group of small business owners in the Heights, and I can say that because most of them, some of them are close to my age. But I'm not so sure. Trustee Weisenberg said that many of the new Gen Xers don't necessarily want to take on inflexible jobs. We need to make sure we're looking ahead. A small business is nothing short of a very time-consuming and demanding job. The other thing was Mr. Aldrick, or Director Aldrick, I guess, had commented that there's no capital restructuring plan, replacement fund that we have, and that there's kind of that looming, you guys seem to be balancing as best you can what those unknown expenses are, and as they come up, try to prioritize those, but that becomes very difficult. I think from a, you know, most of us may never have to use the resources of the police or the Fire Department. That does not mean we don't want those resources available in the community, but we certainly need to make sure that we have a sustainable way to fund them. And maybe we need to look at the usage of those services differently. When I lived in a suburb of Chicago, a small suburb, they had usage fees for those services. So you had a base level you paid with your taxes, but then as you used those services, there was some kind of fee. That certainly is not going to fund it, but I think kind of a back of the envelope, I think in three years, we're going to be a half million dollars short on a budget, you know, roughly, I don't know, that's $175, I think, a household. Does it become a garbage fee situation? I think based on the 75% that you have to have, my guess is that there's not going to be enough votes to rescind it. So it really becomes down to, how are you going to pay for this ongoing if this is something we're committed to, and something you certainly don't want to hire people and then have their livelihoods upset down the road? So I think it becomes, what is that alternative funding if you do decide to go forward? So with that, I do want to thank all of you. I don't think it's easy to sit up there and listen to things. I know how hard you work, and I know you're trying to do what's best for the village. And, you know, we all don't come down on the same side of the issue, but I do respect what you do, and I appreciate your time and effort. Thank you.
Thank you. One quick clarification. I did state last week, I was of the opinion that the FTEs were tied to the budget process, and that would require a three-fourths vote, but Council disagrees with me and says that it's separate, so tonight's vote will be a simple majority. Is that your opinion, Council?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you. Comments are still open, so please come forward.
My name is Adrian Kavner, 4961 North Grandview. Here this evening to encourage Board to uphold the original commitment, which was to provide funds for hiring three full-time firefighters. I'm relatively new to the Heights, so I won't pretend to know the inner workings of the village's finances in detail, or the long history of the Fire Department itself, but I have worn a few different hats that are relevant to this situation. One, I was a volunteer firefighter myself in a small department, not dissimilar to the Heights Department as well. And then in addition to that, I've worked with over 100 Fire Departments all across country, about 40 different states, to get millions of dollars in the last few years in grant funding for issues just like this. Some of the same grant programs that Peoria Heights is pursuing, I've been successful in, some that they haven't pursued, that hopefully you pursue in the future. So I wish that I was here tonight with that experience and a crystal ball, and I could solve the problem. There's no crystal ball, can't do that, but I have a few thoughts about the matter. And the one is just perspective, it's context, that as has been said, this isn't a Peoria Heights problem. There's no mistake or fault of the Board, of the Chief, of the firefighters that's brought this about. It's a multifaceted issue. It's a national issue, whether it's the decreasing volunteerism, the increasing cost of the Fire Department's equipment, the increasing cost of manpower, the heightening requirements for the certifications that are required of your volunteer firefighters. Every single department is facing that. You name one of those problems, I'll tell you a department that has it worse than Peoria Heights currently does. So number two on that list is, this department seems to be moving in the right direction with the plan that was presented and the plan that was voted on and agreed upon. Accepting that point might be a little bit harder based on the context of the discussion I heard from last week's meeting, but you all make very difficult decisions, and it is tempting. Sometimes it's necessary to go back to be retrospective about them, but I would urge you not to go back on this decision that I think was in the best interest of the department. The Board decided to hire three firefighters, three full-time firefighters, in a decision that wasn't an isolated, an isolated opinion of any Board Member. It was the advice of the professional that you brought in to make that, which brings me to the third point, and that is that budgets are for Boards, and the operations, the administrative decisions, those are for the Chief. So I agree with what the mayor pointed out last week. I think that it was an astute point that, you know, it's the Board's right, the Board's responsibility to allocate funds, to prescribe the budget for the department, but beyond that, it is necessary to step back to let the Chief make the professional decision. That's pay structure, that's scheduling, that's the staffing requirements and how he's going to utilize those staff. So I'd encourage the Board to do that moving forward. We talked a little bit about projections, but point four that I have is projections are imperfect. There's no disrespect to Clerk Turner in that the financial projections from last week were comprehensive. I thought she laid them out very well, but at the end of the day, by their nature, they're still projections. They're based on assumptions. Some of those assumptions can be controlled by decisions made in this room. Some of them, there's no control whatsoever, and they're imposed externally. At any given moment, for the Fire Department's funding specifically, the State of Illinois can tighten up the requirements of volunteer firefighters. They could make it impossible for you to sustain a volunteer department. You'd be subjected to having the City of Peoria provide your contracted support, and then your budget is at the whim of the city. On the other hand, Congress could decide that they're actually going to appropriately fund these grant programs. Your problems could go by the wayside. Both of those, who knows which one's going to come? You know, we can't project that. We can't project the financial implications of either situation, but you still have to make the tough decision now to do what's right, and I think that decision should be based on principle, which ties me into the final one, number five here. The financial obligations that you're seeing should give you more than just stress. So I know we talked a lot about the budget, the projections, last week in a very long meeting. Those same red numbers that were on the pages tempt you to step back from the decision that's already been made, from the commitment that you made. But that commitment also buys you a professional staff of firefighters. You're purchasing something, and it gives you control of that transition on a timeline that you're determining rather than having it imposed upon you. That gives you some predictability. It gives you some control over the roadmap for moving the department forward. But most importantly in this situation is it gives you some control over the quality of the work, and in this line of work, quality is safety. You know, with firefighting, the outcome of that quality is someone's livelihood, maybe not losing a job, but losing a business, or in the worst-case scenario, someone's life. So at the end of the day, these decisions do have to be sustainable. Yes, that's true. They have to be based on facts, but they should all revolve around the fact that this is a life safety issue, that staffing the Fire Department is not a joke. It's something that needs to be a top priority. So to tie all that together, I won't beat the dead horse, but I urge everyone to vote in favor of maintaining their original commitment of honoring the decision to hire three full-time firefighters, maintaining that current trajectory for the department. And to the extent that it doesn't work within the budget, if the projections pan out exactly as they are, then those decisions have to be made to cut, but I would urge you to keep public safety at the top of the priorities that you are funding. So thank you for your attention to that, to everyone's comments, and for the work that you do on the Board.
All right. Thank you. All right, Mary, welcome.
Well, I wasn't going to get up tonight because I just feel like we are beating a dead horse, but most importantly, you hired Chief Decker to do a job. He's done it. Chief Sutton, Chief Decker, the Board, the Fire Commission, you beat it up. To do what? You asked them to do something, and they did it. And I feel like now, I don't understand the financial part of it. I'll be the first one. I mean, I understand it. Do I know the, like, Stephanie did great. I came and I listened last week, and I think Stephanie did a good job. I'm not able to comprehend all of that. However, just, I just need somebody to tell me, had you have chose to go with Peoria eight, nine months ago, surely by now you'd have had to pay him something. So where would that money have come from? Because that, off of that plan they put on or presented was more than what keeping it here is. So somebody explain to me where that money would have come from, and even moving forward, where would that money have come from? How would we have paid Peoria? That's all I want to know.
Thank you, Mary. We're still open for public comment.
My name is Joe Genzel, 1512 East Monita. First, I just wanted to thank all of our firefighters, you know, full-time and volunteer. My uncles and cousins are volunteer firefighters. A lot of my friends are Peoria firefighters, so I know at least a little bit about the amount of time you put in and the risks that you take. You know, I've, this is my first time coming here, but I've, you know, I've listened to a lot of Board meetings in the past, and... to a lot of Board meetings in the past, and, you know, I've heard Chief Decker talk about the department's morale improvement and the recent spike in volunteer numbers, and just the willingness of volunteers to go, you know, above and beyond what's expected of them. You know, and I've also overheard current firefighter, or Heights firefighters, you know, talk about their eagerness to drill and learn from more experienced firefighters, just while, you know, getting, getting coffee at leaves and beans, or, you know, being, you know, just in and around the Heights. I've, the one they were working on, Mike Miller's house over there, drilling over there. So, you know, I think, you know, these men and women are tasked with an enormous responsibility. But I do think that it's unfortunate that the hiring process of three full-time firefighters is now in limbo, you know, because our village is saying it can't fund those salaries. A month before offers, you know, were to be made, now there's talk about, you know, pumping the brakes and possibly hiring maybe just one firefighter, which was not what was promised. You know, if, if this were a business and 20 applicants applied for three positions, but management came back and suddenly reduced those three positions to one because the company simply ran out of money, you know, that would not inspire anyone to take that job, least of all the top candidates from that group of 20. Over a year ago, many residents were, you know, up in arms about the possibility of contracting with Peoria Fire Department. These folks went door-to-door gathering signatures, putting signs in their yards to defeat, to defeat the proposal and save our volunteer fire department. But, you know, from my perspective, it's, it's hard to see, you know, what these folks are saving when we don't have the foresight to fund it properly. And how is the Heights going to continue to attract skilled firefighters if we don't have a plan to pay them in the long term? So I think before making any decision, I would just ask the Board, you know, take the opportunity to revisit the financials of Trustee Wigginton's plan. Compare it to the cost of a volunteer full, you know, full-time hybrid model. Not just on a year-to-year basis, but the long-term cost and the projections of a Peoria Fire contract versus the salaries, training, equipment, vehicle maintenance, medical coverage, and pensions that come with facilitating our own fire department. I'd also ask the Board to look closely at response times, and also consider the volume of calls both the Heights firefighters, Fire Department responds to and Peoria Fire responds to. You know, I understand why so many current residents want to keep, you know, the tradition of a volunteer fire department alive. But I just want to make sure that the hybrid fire department model is the safest and also most fiscally responsible option, you know, for our firefighters and the people of this community before our taxes are raised and it's implemented. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Public comment's still open.
My name is Captain Ben Thompson. I'm a current captain here on the Fire Department in Peoria Heights. I just want to, first of all, address the public and let everybody know that irregardless of any decision that is made here tonight or any other time, we will provide the most professional and the safest terms of service to anybody in this village. Regardless of whether you live here, whether you're visiting, we will always make it work. Second off, there have been a couple of comments that I've heard saying that they want to hire a professional paid fire department. It doesn't matter whether or not you're paid, volunteer, on a stipend, we're always professional. We do our best to maintain a professional attitude and a professional demeanor when we are out in the public. And we do our best to make sure. Another, the gentleman that just spoke said that sometimes we're going, or at some point in the future, we may struggle to get skilled applicants to come in and take these full-time positions. I'm under the understanding that we're going to create our own. Any new volunteer firefighter, we, we welcome you. And if you're a current firefighter on another department, and you have your EMT license and your basic operations firefighter certification, please put in your application. We will consider you for stipend positions. In the meantime, until this is all figured out, we would certainly love to, to have you. And anybody who is willing to volunteer, please put in your application. I am one of the main people here who tries to help train these younger members and newer members that are coming in, and I take pride in myself and to, to say that I do my best to create skilled firefighters and skilled EMTs who are going to be able to go off in the future and teach the next generation that comes in. I just wanted to make sure the public knows that irregardless of any decision that is made, we are going to do our best to make sure that everybody is taken care of inside of this village. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ben. Anyone else? All right, public comment, go on once, twice. Public comments closed. We'll go right into old business. Any old business come before the Board? Hearing none, let's get right into new business. There are two items under economic and community development. The first is Ordinance 2024-1733, and ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a business development district number one redevelopment agreement by and between the Village of Peoria Heights and Artemis Peoria LLC and Lindsay M. Schwischek. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All right, we'll go to you, Trustee Kazam, and then Mr. Aldridge.
Yes, we very excitingly have a new business in the Village of Peoria Heights, Artemis Salon. The owner, Lindsay Schwischek, is in the audience this evening. This, this particular developer slash owner has put a lot of money and time into redeveloping this site to the tune of well over 300, just under $400,000. And they are before us this evening requesting $10,000 in assistance to their investment in this, at this address. I don't know if Director Aldridge has more to add to that?
I think you summarized it very well, yeah. Considerable investment, BDD eligible funds, so $10,000 I think is a good investment in this project.
Thank you. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reckert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is Ordinance 2024-1734, and ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a business development district number one redevelopment agreement by and between the Village of Peoria Heights and Roof Tiger PLC and Harold N. Morrow. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All right, go right ahead, please.
So we, we, this business, Roof Tiger and solar, his, the solar sales of this business have been in our village for some time. They are actually, have made the move from the 4500 building to purchasing the, what was once owned by KDB Group, the Quonset Hut. They've improved the exterior of that building, and they are requesting funds, I think it's for signage, but I'm not exactly sure. So we have representative in the audience this evening as well. Director Aldridge, do you have?
That is for a sign, isn't it?
Yes, Ben Merle is in the audience with Roof Tiger. Again, there are, there are some signs installed now. Those signs will come down, my understanding, Ben. And then this, this grant is for signage and some electrical work, and I think approaching about $20,000 in total. So typically, the Board has given grants for signage. We pay 75% up to 10,000. So this is structured similar to that. The difference is we, we were always a little bit uncomfortable from a staff perspective about signed grants when the business may not be in existence for, you know, too long. So in this case, this, this grant has been structured in a way that we may continue in the future as a forgivable loan. So $10,000 upfront, but it starts accruing interest, again, on a yearly basis, on an annual basis, if the business, and, and bits of that get forgiven every year over a five-year term. So, so in effect, if Roof Tiger is in business five years from now, and we hope they are, God willing. Yes, they, they will have a $10,000 grant with no interest payments, you know, like that. So, so basically, grant, stay in business.
Great.
Thank you. Discussion?
Do they do any, do you do any sales from that location that would generate like sales tax revenue?
Not, not in retail sales, like you get, like a bar or a restaurant, or, or clothing or anything like that. No. We have invested quite a bit of money into the Quonset Hut, which was an eyesore, and continues to be a little bit half-painted on both sides. We plan to renovate that and make it look really nice for you guys, so the money's going to go towards electrical mostly, for making, electrical currently is defunct, and then putting lighted signage out front. Yep, and that's it. Currently, we just hung a banner out there for the temporary signage. Only other change I would make is that we were supposed to have the signs up by end of September, and the people who make our signs unexpectedly had their assigned person pass away two weeks ago, so three weeks ago. So if we could have just a month extension, get it up by end of October, that'd be great.
I think the agreement allows that by the village administrator.
Anyone else? This is the second sign we paid for Roof Tiger, isn't it?
Yes.
Correct.
And they didn't generate sales tax at the first location, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I appreciate your investment in the community and all the money you've put into, into that. There's been a lot of discussion around this table about only supporting businesses who generate sales tax, so I just, whatever we do tonight, I hope we're consistent moving Anyone else?
Yeah, and, thank you, Mayor. And as far as consistency, and this has, this has nothing to do, and I appreciate your contribution here to the village. I have been one of the most outspoken people on what people who pay in, take out. And so, you know, one of the things, we had, we actually had two projects today, and one of the things that was quoted in the previous project was what the sales taxes revenue was going to be on, on that project. And I appreciate you being so candid and open that you wouldn't be. So for that reason, I will be voting no.
Understood.
Anyone else?
So this is the second sign we've paid for?
They, they were leasing the location before, the 4500 building, and then bought a building.
Okay.
Which is also in Peoria Heights, over in Allen Court.
Do we have any limit on how many times a business can apply for?
We don't, actually. We actually have, is it every year, Wayne? Is that what it is?
I believe so, and we, you know, we certainly couldn't make that more strict.
And I believe this is what spurred us doing it this way, is to protect us in the end, for this not to happen, having a handful of times to us, to the BDD.
You know, I will say, and Trustee Wigginton and I have had multiple conversations about this, I agree in many ways that if you pay in, you get something out of it. On the other hand, I have been very consistent throughout my time here in this position that when there is beautification to the exterior of a building, that also benefits the other businesses in our area. So while we are assisting in the payment of a sign, this particular business and owner has paid money to beautify the building that they purchased, and has doubled down on their commitment to our community. So for that reason, I'm voting yes this evening.
Did we deny another applicant, though, because it had been their second time?
No, but there were some no votes in the past.
But when, was it the 12 bar, or did they come back their second time?
It, it wasn't for signage, it was something else in the, I think lighting in the hall.
Interior lighting.
Yeah, right.
Okay. But we denied them because we had already given them a sign?
We'd given them various things, but it was also completed.
Okay.
Yes.
And I want to make it clear that I support this, because I'm a believer that a rising tide lifts all boats, as the expression goes. But I think we need to have a discussion in the future and give Mr. Aldridge a little bit more direction and tighten up some of these areas that are somewhat gray areas. I agree with Trustee Kazam that this investment helps the business development district. And for those of you who don't know, the business development district is a geographic district that we have that imposes an additional sales tax, and that's how it's funded, it's funded by sales tax money. And then the village doesn't take any of that money, we reinvest it back into the business development district. So again, your investment is much appreciated, but it does, I, I think it's legitimate argument to, to say in the future that we're only going to fund businesses that generate sales tax, but it's something that we need to continue to talk about. Anyone else?
Can I just say something else?
Yeah, go ahead, right ahead.
If this gets approved, I just want to, I had no idea this was happening with the Fire Department. I've been very happy with starting a business here in Peoria Heights, been very thrilled with the government here. I think it runs well. And just from the conversation tonight, I'm going to donate $5,000 to the Fire Department just because of what's going on, so I'm just going to do that.
Thank you very much. We have a lady, I'll take your check.
Very generous of you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reckert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Nay.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Trustee Kazam or Director Aldridge, anything else under economic development?
Not for me.
A couple of things. We, we did have a zoning revisions kind of focus group last week, I thought very successful. About 15 people showed up and had great discussion led by Far Associates and Co. Studio, so that was good. Future meetings will also occur, and we'll let you know when those are. The active transportation plan, that's ongoing. I think if schedules work out, a presentation probably by Zoom to the Board on October 1st at that meeting, if things are okay, by our consultant, Lardner Klein. And then for that plan, we have another meeting tentatively scheduled for October 22nd, another kind of a, a public type of meeting. So those are just a couple of updates on some of the projects we're doing.
Thank you.
Wayne, just to be clear, the only meeting, public meeting set is the October 22nd meeting so far?
Yeah, it's not, I, I'll set it tonight if you guys agree, so that's, it's, it's been kind of tentative, but I think October 22nd, and then that's public meeting, and then October 1st being a presentation to the Board, yes.
Okay. Do you have times on the 22nd?
Excuse me?
What time? Or on the 22nd?
Probably 5:00 to 7:00.
Okay.
We, we struggle with times, and again, if you know folks that are interested, you know, a personal invitation helps a lot, and we'll make some phone calls as well.
Thank you for making the Zoom option available, because I was able to attend, because I was able to listen to Zoom, so thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Let's move right into administration and finance. There are three items. The first is a resolution that was asked to be placed on this agenda. Resolution 2024-14, a resolution rescinding prior resolution 2024-06 regarding the hiring of full-time firefighters. Trustee Kazam, or I'm sorry, Trustee DeVore, you asked this to be placed on there, I believe, so I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, before we start the discussion, again, I stated earlier that last meeting, I was under the impression that FTEs, the full-time employees, were part of the budget process, so I stated that, that would require a three-fourths vote, but my friend, Mr. Walton, disagreed with me, so this will only require a simple majority, in your opinion, Council?
Correct.
Okay. Go right ahead, Trustee DeVore.
Um, I would like to first start by saying, like, I hear what everyone is saying, and this has not been an easy decision for anyone sitting up here. I think ultimately, we have all really tried hard to make the best decision with the information that we have. It seems to be that the information keeps changing on us, not just financial numbers, but the process of how things work. I don't want to cast any, I don't want that to be cast against the administration. I feel that they have given us, or tried to give us, every piece of information they've had along the way. had along the way. However, even just this week, new information has been brought to us. So I feel that we're making decisions here, and we have been making decisions since last year with half the information. So as I sit here today, if I knew then what I know now, maybe my decision would have been different. Um, and this has been a definite, a big learning curve for myself, um, and I'm sure many others, right? Like, shame on us for not pushing harder to find out all the information. Um, I have probably asked over a hundred questions just this week alone between multiple different people to try to find out the truth and to find out the facts. So, these decisions are not taken lightly by any stretch of the imagination. I am not someone who has spent my whole life being trained on the inner workings of a fire department, or, um, I don't have all the answers, and I'm willing to admit them, but I like to ask for the help, and I have been asking, and things do keep changing. Um, the main reason I wanted this on here, it was because we are on such a time crunch with the commission who has put in tire, like tirelessly the amount of work to do this and to get this up and running, and I don't want that to stop. I don't want this list to go away. I don't want it to be that, oh, we'll never hire a full-time firefighter. I just feel like I don't have all the questions to my answers on how this is gonna work, whether it's with one full-time firefighter, three, or with all stipend positions, like, I feel like I don't get a completely, I don't understand how each one would work. That being said, we did say at the meeting last Tuesday that we would love for, just, we hired Chief Decker to do a job, let's tell him what his budget is and let him do his job. Well, then I'm told we can't do that because the number of full-time fired, the number of full-time employees has to be set by this board and then hired by the commission. So if we give the fire department a million-dollar budget, we still have to determine how many of those full-time employees are gonna be hired that fit with inside those budget restrictions. So for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget, with the hiring of three firefighters starting in October, we are with inside the budget that this board set for the fire department. This has come up because in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget that we have, that would have these three firefighters, that's where it's over budget. So, this model works from October to April in this budget, in this budget year. It doesn't work into next year, which is why it's been brought up again. I also wanted on here that we discuss a referendum because so many of you have come to us and said that you want your own department, we don't wanna go to Peoria, we're willing to pay for it. It's also really hard to sit up here because this whole board has fought to not take higher taxes for anybody. We have not hired, we have not raised sales taxes, we have not taken any higher of a levy into your property taxes, so it's really hard to sit here and hear from a small group of the fifty-five hundred people that live here and make a decision to raise your taxes. So we're gonna discuss, after we discuss this resolution, on a ballot question, having a referendum, because then it's gonna go to the people, right? If, if everyone decides that they want to pay more in taxes, this is a mute point. We hire the three people and we can afford to do it, and there's nothing that can stop that from being paid for. So, I want to hear from everybody, but I also want people to know that we are really trying to make the best decision possible and to not let people down in either way, not to let the fire department down and the people who have given so much hard work, and not to let the residents down, and also not to bankrupt you. So, I don't want it to be perceived that this is, decision has been taken lightly by any stretch of the means.
Uh, what ballot would, uh, question of funding be on?
It would have to go on the April consolidated election.
That's a hundred, a hundred and eighty days for any election, isn't it, council?
Correct.
We've got, too late for the November election.
Correct.
Oh, okay, well, I'm going to stay to the course of what we decided to do, and I'm, I'm gonna vote against rescinding because I just think that ballot's too far off, and I think we just need to stick to our guns. We had it beforehand, in case, granted, next budget, not gonna have it, we're gonna have to figure it out. And I know somebody probably going, well, you're not gonna be here, but as a member of the, the village of Peoria Heights, this is what I would like the board to do, to continue on supporting the fire department, and I know you're not, not supporting it, it's just that we made a decision to go with three firefighters. I think we need to stick to our guns and go through with it.
I would like to say, um, first of all, that I have respect to everybody's opinion up here. I've been consistent throughout. Um, the real tragedy, I think, for our community was a year ago when we had differing opinions, and some of the opinions were characterized as not supporting first responders and not supporting our Peoria Heights Fire Department, because I know that every single person up here supports the Peoria Heights Fire Department. Um, the question is, and to speak to Chief Reiker, it's one of his comments, he said, um, you know, we have historically supported a fire department, but we've historically had a fire department here that has been not paid. In twenty nineteen, I was a person who voted to have some paid positions in order to help sustain this fire department in the village of Peoria Heights, and I still support that opportunity. My fear is, if we hire three fully paid, full-time paid positions now, we will not be able to sustain everything that comes along with it. Last week, we saw in the Journal Star, the article about Peoria's fire department. That's a much larger community, and we don't, at this point, I don't see the opportunity for us to take on a burden like that. I feel, it makes me so concerned to think about us taking on a burden like that and not being able to, first of all, sustain the fire department. These three full-time paid positions, that will not cover us twenty-four hours, seven days a week. We're not considering paid time off, we're not considering sick days, we're not considering those types of things, and, um, I wouldn't wanna have to fire any of these people. I also feel badly that we've gotten ourselves into this position where we've gone through this exercise over the last three hundred and sixty-some days, um, and now we have genuine, you know, applicants that are apparently very, very qualified, and we are having another discussion about this, and I think your, your comment about, about us reimbursing the one hundred and some dollars is valid, and I agree with that as absolute. But my concern for tonight is if we vote, if we don't rescind, this, these applicants will be hired, and then the train has left the station. What I would like to see is that we rescind this vote, we go back to the drawing board, we hire people through stipend and through some part-time positions, and try to sustain our fire department in that way.
Anyone else?
I got a few comments, Mayor. Uh, I've been, first off, thanks to trustee DeVore for, uh, keeping me updated and, uh, working tirelessly to get this board, uh, a lot of information, and I do appreciate it. You know, we've been dealing with this since twenty nineteen, and this started with that we didn't have volunteers and we didn't have coverage, and there was a concern that, you know, someone would need help and we wouldn't be there. Um, we entertained the idea of the contract with Peoria, which would be, um, expensive, and then we hired Chief Decker to present us with a plan that would have guaranteed coverage. And I've been back and forth on this decision on rescinding, but it seems like we're back to accepting that we're not gonna have coverage because an alternative plan has been presented. And if we rescind this, then we may not have coverage, and that was something that started all this in twenty nineteen. Uh, so without an alternative plan for coverage, and with the letter Chief Decker wrote with concerns that there aren't gonna be, there isn't gonna be coverage, that concerns me. We are a town of five thousand people, but on the weekends, we probably bring in half that in patrons to our business. Uh, and I'm sure those patrons expect, when they come to the village of Peoria Heights, to have emergency services should something go wrong. And from what I've heard here tonight, there may not be anyone for up to ten or fifteen minutes. I, and we have an alternative plan, um, and that concerns me. So I wish this decision was easier, um, but without an alternative plan, I don't know how, how we should vote on this, to be honest.
Well, I would argue, and I don't mean to interrupt you, trustee Weisenberg, but Chief Decker has made incredible strides since he's been here. I mean, we heard from him last week at our emergency meeting, we had over a hundred missed calls before he got here, and since he's been here, we've had only four. And those hires have not happened yet. I think what has happened under his guidance is that our fire department has already improved.
No, I, I definitely agree, but we've got some new information this week that even puts that under question, on if that's gonna be sustainable. So, like, I don't know what the alternative is. The only way to guarantee coverage is for these positions. So that, that concerns me, because that's, we started all this because of coverage issues, and now we've gotten to the point where we said, well, okay, we're okay with the coverage issues. Um, and if it wasn't for some of the information that trustee DeVore had said or mentioned earlier, that we're just learning this week, I think my decision today would maybe be a little different. But I'm really concerned that we're not gonna have the, the full-time positions, and we're not gonna have the stipend positions, or a many, or enough of them to cover what we need. Um, so that's a little concerning. I, I, I wanna make sure, um, that we have the coverage, the minimum coverage. No one can accuse this board of, you know, going crazy with the fire department. Um, we're trying to put two men on a fire truck. Um, it's not like we're trying to put eight or twelve. Literally, we're trying to guarantee two people to respond to someone choking at Poor Brothers or an accident, you know, what if a car goes off prospect? I know these are worst-case situations, but we know how people speed. If a car goes off and into a crowd at Poor Brothers, we don't have any coverage. I mean, people aren't gonna come here and spend their money, and we're gonna be even in a bigger crunch. Um, so I certainly respect that this is a difficult decision, but...
And what you kinda thinking, maybe this improvement we've had on coverage from a hundred and some down to just four, it might be the fact that they knew that we were gonna become professional, and they kinda wanna be part of it, and it's giving them more of an incentive to perform and do it? That's, I just think we just need to go through with this.
I think, uh, and I wanna thank trustee DeVore, uh, for a number of things. I, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I think burying our heads in the sand and not seeing that this could be a potential problem would have been the worst mistake of all. So, I wanna, again, publicly say that it was very brave of you to bring this to our attention and propose this and advocate for this to be on the agenda. I also wanna compliment you for doing some of the real investigative work. As you mentioned, you've brought, found things just this week, and this week is about ten hours old. Um, so with you uncovering more and more things, you know, with trustee Weisenberg has said, both the stipends positions and the full-time firefighters are part of Chief Decker's plan. We need both for it to work. Um, so I'm also very concerned, regardless of which avenue we go, um, because they're both necessities as far as that plan is concerned. Um, so I, again, I appreciate all the work that you've done on this. I, I know coming out and saying this has not been easy, um, but it's not gone unnoticed either.
I, I do wanna step in and say that I'm gonna disagree on new financial information. It's always a moving target, but I think the administration laid out the cost of this when all this began, and the main cost is salary and benefits. There might be some other moving targets. I think it was said earlier that businesses open, they close. The economy here is always gonna do well, it's doing well, so I don't think anything's really changed there. We hired a fire chief, we all agreed, gonna follow the directive of having them come in, do a needs assessment, tell you what, what, what was needed, and that was agreed upon. But the costs were warned, made you aware by the administrator, when all this started and gave you options, you chose an option, but what concerns me the very most is what trustee Weisenberg said, there's no other alternative right now. And I'm worried most about calls going unanswered. That's what worried me a year ago, it's what worries me tonight. So, um, I, I commend you all for the thoughtful and thorough discussion you're having. I'm interjecting myself, or I usually don't, but there are a lot of things to think about here. And, um, I think the pension cost is, is the big one. That's the one that, that costs the most money. We can afford salaries, and pension costs are so unknown, and actuaries haven't even weighed in to make us aware of what those costs could be. So, it's a big expense, but if this isn't, if this isn't the option, there has to be something else, and us sitting around here trying to tell the fire chief how to run the fire department isn't gonna work either. So, it's unfortunate he's not here tonight, but he's at, as we said, he's out on a flight, and, um, I think he needed to be there, but we gotta come up with some solutions, no matter what the decision is here tonight, um, to make sure that people are safe when they call for help, that we get people there, personnel there, on time, whether they're volunteers, whether they're on stipend, or whether they're full-time people.
I have, uh, very emotionally wrestled with this decision for about the last week because I, I come from firefighters, but I also love this village, and numbers don't lie. The, the money has to be there, and you have to be able to financially support anything that comes along. I don't mind the idea of putting a pause button on. I'm not, the, the village, the village fire department is not going anywhere. We are not entertaining Peoria, we are not looking at anything. Our guys are doing a great job right now while we try to make this difficult decision. They are stepping up and they are handling their department while we try to make this very strong decision. But this decision is not just about the, the, the men, it is about the money. And if the money isn't there, we can't give them what they want. And when I try to sit back, and I haven't asked my fellow board members this, but when I try to see where the department is in five years, what I'm afraid of is that it won't be here because of the numbers, because of what the projected numbers, that yes, they could change, they can go up, they can go down. What I visualize is a full-time fire chief, maybe eventually a few full-time guys that are leading our volunteers, they're training our volunteers, and they're educating our volunteers, and our volunteerism going up for that purpose. But the pension stuff does scare me, I don't understand all of it, and I get it, but we, we have to, every decision that we make affects you indirectly, and this is not something that we're taking lightly. So by asking to put a pause on does not mean that we are going back to Peoria, it just means that we just need to make, take a little more time to make the right decision for us. And we have enough faith in our volunteer fire department, our professional volunteer fire department, to, to feel like we can ask you for that pause. They are professional firefighters, they are just not full-time firefighters. So in order to afford them, we just ask for a small pause.
Anyone else? Uh, council, uh, the current list that we have, if the board rescinds the decision tonight, I'm not sure where this is going, but if the decision is resented, that list remains in place, correct?
Oh, absolutely.
So...
Absolutely.
Hires could be made then, again, sooner?
Months from now, yes.
At the, so the next meeting or sometime in the future?
Correct. We don't have to start over.
And, and that list is ready to go, correct?
Close. I think tomorrow's the last day for preferences.
Okay.
If those candidates are still here, I'm sorry, but you're assuming those candidates that we've gotten this far along, they're gonna take this pause as backup, we need to relook at, and hang out, twiddle their thumbs. You'll still be on our list, we'll still call you when we finally get around to do it. I'm sorry, that's not the way it works in first cares, first responders.
Okay, and I wanna, I wanna thank the Police and Fire Commission for all the work. Chief Walters, I know you have tons and tons of hours in on this, is that correct? All right, thank you.
Does it, does it make sense to defer this question until Chief Decker can follow up on some of the new information that we have, or so that he can be here? Because some of you are asking about what an additional plan is, and again, we are, I, you know, myself specifically, I'm saying I don't wanna make decisions without all the facts, so is it fair to give us to the next meeting, to, do we defer to this next meeting? Or will the, or will the Police and Fire Commission just do the hiring if we, if we defer? the, or will the Police and Fire Commission just do the hiring if we, if we defer? Like, is there a way to ask hiring to be not done if we defer this question to...
I'd like, Trustee DeVore, I like that idea. Um, two members of the commission here, if the board takes another pause, will the commission do as well?
Certainly, certainly. I don't think we'd object at all.
Jeff, you're back there, is that...
Whatever counsel says, it's all right, that's fine.
As long as we're staying within the legal boundaries, we have no problem at all with this. Uh, we've put a lot of work to this point. We hate to see it go to waste.
It will not go to waste. I, we're just asking for a little bit more time to make sure that the financials are where we've promised them to be.
All right, so we could, you could vote this down and another motion to rescind could be on a future agenda or we can defer this. So, I, I think I'd prefer a motion to defer. Do you agree with that, counsel?
Yes.
I make a motion to defer.
Second.
Was that you, Trustee Gett?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor, well, let's call the role on that. Madam Clerk, the motion to defer.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you. All right, we would be at ordinance 2024-1735, an ordinance establishing the number of authorized Class A2 liquor licenses within the corporate limits of the Village of Peoria Heights. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-1735.
Second, please.
Second.
All right, go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
Um, so when Good Tequilas went out of, uh, when they closed their doors, our liquor licenses went from 16 back to 15. This would be increasing, um, the Class A2 licenses back to 16 to allow another business to obtain that license in that regard.
Thank you. And just a reminder that you set the number of licenses and I decide who gets them, so...
Correct. And we recently adopted an ordinance that automatically pulled licenses as they lapsed, um, so that this board has to act.
But I will tell you, that will be the business that gets the license if this is approved.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I'll call the question.
All right, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is a discussion of a ballot question on funding for the fire department. Trustee DeVore would like to start.
Yes, um, I just think that, um, based on everything that's gone on, we've, there's a lot of speculation in every direction. I just think it would be, we've talked about this in the past and didn't follow through with it. Um, I think it would be beneficial for us to put a non-binding referendum on the consolidated election in April that asks, um, if our residents would be willing to pay an increased tax to pay for the fire department. Um, this closes a lot of gaps for us if we do ask the question and it, you know, it passes, um, because then it's a very easy decision for us to help fund the department that we so badly want to keep. Um, I think the wording on it is really particular. Um, I know that maybe we don't always agree on how the wording should be, so I would look to counsel to maybe give us the guidance on how that wording should go out because I don't want it to be leading, I want it to be very factual on what it would look like. Um, so I think that we should just discuss what all of us would prefer if we, one, if you want to do the referendum, and two, what you would like the wording to be for that referendum to say.
I'm in full support of this being on a referendum in April. Regarding the wording, I guess we would have guidance from counsel.
Sure.
Our attorneys are just specializing in that, aren't they?
Um, but it is important because, you know, tax is a word we use a lot, but as we've even discussed tonight, there's sales tax and there's property tax, two completely different things. Um, and asking the public if they would approve an increase in taxes is an incomplete question. So, I think you almost would, would want to consider perhaps two questions.
Well, don't you agree that, I mean, the educational piece I think is critical that, um, you inform people of what the issue is and then how you're going to fund it, correct?
Correct.
So, I think we have a little bit of time to work on that and...
We do have the benefit of some time.
Counsel?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mary.
No, 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 go ahead.
Do you know how much time?
I don't know the exact deadline. It's sometime in December.
Okay.
I'll let everybody know.
Okay, and then I would prefer it to be a binding resolution.
We can't do that.
You can't do that?
No, we can't do binding.
No, but I think everybody around this table and, uh, historically is probably going to follow, unless it's a really close vote, but if, if the public weighs in overwhelmingly, I can't imagine that someone on this board would go against that decision, but that's possible.
Okay, and then when we do, um, you're right, there's many different types of taxes, taxes unfortunately. Um, when we state this question, is there a sales tax that we could implement for public safety or is it just the property tax side?
Sales tax is not specific. You don't impose a public safety tax. You impose an additional sales tax. Um, how the board chooses to spend that additional tax is up to the board.
Yeah, you can't bind the board to spend it on fire.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. Only the county can impose the public safety tax. We can't do that.
And are there any like use taxes that we can do regarding the fire department?
It really, the only solution is the general fund, real estate tax.
Okay.
Uh, that we have some available room. I could calculate that. I can work with Clerk Turner on that.
Are we able to differentiate between commercial properties and residential properties and that, that tax structure?
No.
Okay.
The tax rate is set across the board, whether you're residential or commercial. The assessment is up to the assessor.
Right.
There are different parameters on commercial properties than there are on residential, but the tax rate, um, you know, is based on location.
I think you, you need to give the public an estimate of what those taxes are going to look like and what the cost is, but I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, this would be another line item on your bill, on your tax bill, and it would specifically read safety? No.
No, it would not.
It just raises the property taxes.
Okay.
We would just be increasing our rate for the general fund.
So, this board couldn't, in good conscience, say we would use that raise to fund the fire department, but that does not guarantee that a future board could say, no, we're not doing that and use that money for something else.
They could use it for whatever you want.
Yeah. So, so since the county can implement a public safety tax, if the county implemented a public safety tax, it only goes to the county, it cannot come to us.
Correct. And it would only apply in, um, non-incorporated areas, so it wouldn't apply in Peoria Heights anyway.
And that, uh, original county tax?
Actually, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but, but it would only go to the county. It would not be dedicated to Peoria Heights.
And that, that tax originally was to go for bonding and...
Correct.
Buildings and...
Correct.
Not, not salaries, but you could use it.
Correct.
I'm, uh, I'm certainly open to, uh, a ballot question. I think we have to be very careful. The last time we had a ballot question on, uh, was in 2014, um, the November 4th, 2014 election. And at that time, there was a ballot question that said, shall the Village of Peoria Heights levy, uh, property tax at the rate not to exceed 0.22% to protect the public safety by adequately funding the ambulance service? And then it went on to say, an ambulance tax levied at a rate of 0.22% would result in an increase of $60.13 in the real estate tax on an owner occupied home with a fair market value of $100,000. Um, that failed, uh, the, by a large margin. Uh, and so I think we have to be very careful, uh, when we're asking ballot questions. So, I, I just tread lightly here.
Stephanie did provide me with some amazing information on this because I did request. Um, if we were to ask the question just to pay for the three firefighters, not their whole budget, but three full-time firefighters in that, for every $100,000 worth of your house, it would be an additional $120.75 per property. Am I understanding that correctly?
That, those are the numbers as I remember them.
Okay. Um, so I don't know how we take that and put it into a simple little question, right? Because obviously if you have a $200,000 house or a million dollar house, that's different. But for every $100,000, your property taxes would increase $120.74. And that is to cover all of the fire, that would cover all of the fire pensions and three full-time firefighters.
Yeah, we, I want to drill down a little deeper on that, but keep in mind that's a moving target because you got to expect wages to go up three to five percent a year and the cost of pensions and benefits, so...
But at the same time, as, as I just realized, uh, value, EAV valuations on your house seem to also go up, uh...
Every year.
As I just got in the mail, uh, so...
Twenty percent, some, for some people.
Yep, yep.
So, I would like to figure out how we would like to word that, right? I, and incorporate that into the question, right?
It, it always works best if you have like, you know, at least some proposed language to work off of, I'll do that part at least.
Okay.
Yeah, I, can you develop some potential questions?
Yes.
What they might look like? Um, so I, I think some direction too, maybe not tonight, but to counsel on, do you prefer a property tax, um, way to pay or a sales tax or a mixed bag? But again, just keep in mind that boards are entitled to spend those revenues however they choose, but this will at least get a start and, um, a good estimate.
Thank you.
Anyone else on that? So, we'll get that back on the agenda as soon as, um, administration and, and counsel are able to do that. Um, Trustee DeVore, anything else under administration?
I think that sums it up today, Mayor.
You've been awful quiet tonight.
Nothing there.
Okay. All right. Public safety, uh, is next. Uh, Trustee Wigginton, approval for street closure for Peoria Heights Homecoming Parade on Simp, on September 27th, 2024 from 3:00 to 4:30 PM. I'd ask for a motion, please.
Uh, Mayor, I move to approve the street closures for the Peoria Heights Homecoming Parade on September 27th, 2024 from 3 o'clock to 4:30.
Second.
Go right ahead. Anything?
Um, basically, that, that kind of sums it up. Uh, we are going to have, uh, the Peoria Heights, uh, high school is going to be coming down, uh, though I, I believe the route is going to be Glen to Prospect.
Prospect to Glen.
Prospect to Glen.
Yeah, they come out of Marietta by Sherman's, go up Prospect.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I had it backward. So, Prospect to Glen.
They're going to the high school.
Going to the high school, right. Um, so, and Trustee Reichert, did I get everything there?
Yeah, yeah, uh, everybody come out and support the school and the fire trucks will be in it and it's a good time. I'll be driving something, I'm sure.
All right.
In it in three different capacities, probably.
Good.
I expect to hear you.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Sorry, one more.
You want to leave?
Any businesses that want to be involved in the, um, parade are absolutely welcome. Um, if you reach out to Michelle Barnes and she's our athletic director, our volleyball coach and all-around everything person over there, but if she does not answer you, reach out to me directly and I will get you put in the right hands. Um, but we would love to see some of our businesses getting back involved in the fire department. When, when I was in high school and prior to that, a lot of the businesses had their own floats and the Chamber of Commerce had a float and everybody kind of got involved. And we've dwindled down to the point now where it's a couple of fire trucks, a few, a few floats, me driving a couple of cars and, um, about 12, 12-minute parade when it used to be so much bigger. So, if any of your friends in business or anybody wants a float for any reason, just reach out to myself, Michelle Barnes, or whoever, and we'll get you, we'll get you put on the list.
Is there an opportunity for donations?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I can get you that information. Michelle was supposed to send me some stuff, but she had a game tonight, so I think she ran out of time in her day, much like I do.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Anything else under public safety?
Couple of things, uh, Mr. Mayor. So, um, we had some public comment at our last meeting, um, or a couple of meetings ago, and, uh, Chief Sutton said that he would, uh, take action on that and he has. So, there is a stop sign now installed, uh, on Glen Elman Best, uh, and I think that is, uh, hopefully slowing down some of the traffic over there. In addition, um, we had the, we had a big appropriation a couple of meetings ago to purchase a new, uh, fire, uh, air conditioning unit, uh, for our fire department that has been installed, uh, so, uh, that is up and running, uh, so just in time for fall. Uh, but, uh, it's, uh, it's installed, so, uh, that's, that's it for, uh, the updates on public safety.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to get into too long of a stop sign discussion, but I, I did see an article last week that really surprised me because I have supported stop signs wherever asked for, but there, um, some of police chiefs have been weighing in that they think that stop signs are counterproductive because people then go faster in between the stop signs. So, just food for thought and I don't know that I agree with that, but...
It's a whack-a-mole.
Oh, I do.
You do?
I've seen it, yeah. They do.
I have, I've only had the street sign up the road for a couple of days and I've, I've seen, I've seen everybody gun it down that hill now.
In between the stop signs?
Uh, after that last stop sign because it's right at the top of the hill, they gun it.
I'll try and find that and send it on to you.
The only thing that really stops them is the nice people.
All right. We would be at miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous come for the board?
Yeah, I got one question, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I got a, a message, an email a while back, and I meant to mention this on the last meeting, but did we close the street beside Heritage Square on the right-hand side? Was that Marietta, Manita?
Marietta, Manita, or Kelly, Kelly and...
No.
No, Marietta.
Marietta. Uh, for an event on August 17th, because I don't remember voting for a street, street closure, but I got an email from, um, one of, a few of the neighbors that were there. Apparently there was a Notre Dame event or something and they had the street closed.
They didn't do it with our permission if it was done.
Okay. There was some kind of marathon or something that was going on?
There was a Shazam racing thing, but the road wasn't closed. I, they allowed every car pass to drive right over the, the bump and everything.
That's, that's an annual event also, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, they, the road was not closed, though. They might have, yeah, I was, I, because my grandmother was over there, we drove right over that little speed bump to, or their little...
Okay.
Thing.
They reported that they closed the street and I told them I didn't...
At least it wasn't when I went by.
I didn't remember voting on these street closures.
If there's cars parked on that street and a lot of people, I, I could see where you could get the impression that you can't get through.
Okay.
Historically, that event, they've never closed the street, but...
Um, if that happens, I mean, and, and people are obstructing the street, they should call, call police.
Well, and maybe it might be in the best interest to just have them reach out to us and let us know that it's happening so that we can let the public know that they can still pass through even though it looks like they can't.
Any other miscellaneous? All right, we'd be back at general comments from the audience. If anyone would like to make a comment to the board, please come forward, give your name and address. Chief Reichert, go ahead.
This is a little easier one, hopefully. Um, I was here two, three weeks ago when GNO switched to GFL and we were told there was going to be no change in services, blah, blah, blah. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, the 17th, uh, lawn waste, put out some bags at my mother-in-law's house. We had them torrential rains, but, you know, I, I only put it out like on Thursday and they came along and bags broke, left the grass, left the bags. and they came along, and bags broke, left the grass, left the bags. The 70-year-old lady next door had to pick up the grass and stuff before I got to it. And I wasn't the only person there. I saw a couple of them down Glen, and I still haven't got my garbage can. So, I'm not asking for a second one. I'm asking for one. I've never had one, and I'm paying for the service. I would kind of like to have my garbage can. I don't have a real warm, fuzzy feeling that I'm going to get it either. I have the contact information. Norm, I'll get it for you. I'll take care of it this week. It's up on Highland, 913 Highland.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do have a contract with them, but I think moving forward, I don't think any of us really expect the service that Gary Madison gave us.
It's not the same.
It's not going to happen, but we'll hold them to everything we can.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, Rob, welcome.
Rob Stevenson, 1505 East Glen. Thank you, Board, for all you've done. I know it's a very difficult discussion we had tonight, and this is totally unrelated to that, although you broached it a little bit with Roof Tiger. I think it essential that we continue to focus on the sales tax revenue on the business corridor. We're starting to get creep with companies that are, firms that aren't supporting that, and we have the best downtown around, and we've been very fortunate with all the different restaurants and, and shops. But as soon as we get this creep, if it continues, then people aren't going to want to come here. So, please be cognizant that we need sales tax revenue generation, especially in that Prospect corridor going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, comments going once, twice. Comments are closed. We do have an executive session, so I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for five ILCS 120/2C1 personnel.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that motion? Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, who was the second? Thank you. Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Reichert?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
All right, we are going into executive session. We will return to this room, but not to conduct any business. We'll return to adjourn.
I don't care.
We're back in regular session. There's no further business coming forward with this board, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Second?
All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I just have it. All right.